Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by our chairman of the council.
Our blessed citizens of the United States of America, in due regard for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you be with us in these discussions and help us with the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Thank you for the abundant blessings and for being our source of guidance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We now have a report from our Chamber of Commerce Director.
Good afternoon, city and council. On Thursday, June 23rd, Ranch House Burgers was host to our monthly Business Networking Mixer, Business After Hours. We had a really great turnout and were able to get members to connect with each other over some good food at one of Mission's favorite burger places. The next morning, we held our monthly Coffee Connections at a new location, Home Trips Bakery. They are also new members who we welcomed with ribbon cutting earlier this month. We held a ribbon cutting for Coffee Artista, one of Mission's newest coffee shops. Great turnout and great coffee. Thank you, Mayor, for taking some time out to show your support at this event. We appreciate it. Chamber member Texas Guest Ranch celebrated their 50th anniversary with a ribbon cutting celebration and a tour of their facilities. When they went into business 50 years ago, we were their first chamber that they had joined with and celebrated again 50 years later. So, that was a great turnout. Our next ribbon cutting is for Smile &amp; Shine on Friday, July 8th, at 4:00 PM at 1701 West Mile 3 Road, Suite E, Mission. We hope you'll be able to join us for that. And of course, we are still gearing up for our big summer event, Chef's Barbecue Throwdown and Car Show. Through this event, we will provide $1,000 scholarships for each high school from MCISD and Sherri Land ISD. The students who qualify plan to further their education by participating in any of the e-steam programs that would include entrepreneurship, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. This free event is a unique version of a classic event packed with food vendors, art vendors, 80-plus cars, five live country bands, and 15 to 20 chef-led teams from restaurants across the valley. We're telling these chefs to get behind a pit and produce the best barbecue for $2,500 in cash prizes. We're selling $10 wristbands to taste samples from each cooking team, and we encourage attendees to order those before the event by contacting the chamber. If you're interested in participating as a cooking team, food vendor, market vendor, vehicle entry, or sponsor for the event, please contact the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce at (956) 585-2727. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That's all we have.
Thank you. Our next item is the department reports. You have them in your packet. If you all have any questions, this is the time to ask.
Mayor, if there's no question, I move that we approve the departmental reports that are presented in writing.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to approve the department reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Citizens' participation. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Are you going to?
I'm going to introduce the guest mayor. Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce today our neighboring mayor and sister city. He's also the president of our Sister City of America Association. His name is Mayor David Gustavo Flores Lavenant. He's here today with a special invitation to mayor and the council, so I'd like to invite him to please come forward.
Muy buenas, buenas tardes a todos.
Muy buenas tardes.
Mayor. Primero, quiero decirles una muy buena tarde que todos los acuerdos que hoy se toman aquí sean en beneficio de la ciudad de Mission. And second, I'll send a cordial invitation, Mayor, for our next convention in the city of Torreón, Coahuila, and Francisco Madero. Our ninth international Convention of Cities Hermanas, where it would be very important that they could be with us, accompanied by Jessica, Mr. Plata, Dr. Armando Caña, Martin Garza, Nori Gonzales, that they could accompany us. It's important to highlight precisely the importance of strengthening relations and brotherhood to be able to go forward in this global world that requires that we can go together towards projects in common that we can have. Nicolas will give you the corresponding invitation next August 5, 6, and 7.
Gracias.
Then we'll get more information via the mail. Thank you for letting me do this.
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Anybody else that would like to address the council? Thank you all very much. And we go on to our public hearings. Mr. Tejera.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 5 and 6, Block 180, Mission original townsite. The request is from R1, single-family residential to R2 duplex, fourplex residential. The applicant is Enrique Favela. And if this rezoning is approved, it will require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 8th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the northeast corner of Holland Avenue and West 10th Street. There was a...I did receive two calls. However, there was nothing in writing against the rezoning. So, we...the board... The Planning Commission recommended approval of the R2 zone. Staff is recommending denial, as is our city manager. We found in our records, an ordinance 3180 wherein the city council, back in 2006, rezoned these blocks to R1. So, this is a public hearing. This matters now before you. I just want to also mention, Mayor, that the future land use map is low density as well. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The recommendation from our staff means that we have to reject the request simply because we passed an ordinance about eight years ago. We would not have approved any apartments in this area. That ordinance still is very enforced. And I agree with our staff that we should deny any request for R2s.
Mayor, I move that we deny the request that's presented by our staff.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1B, Mayor and council, is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit to place a 24-foot wide by 60-foot-long portable building at 915 West Expressway 83. This is Lot 1, Nido de Aguilar subdivision. The zoning is public, and the applicant is Luz Para las Naciones Church. And this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit. On June 8th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at the southwest corner of South Olmos Street and the south side of US Expressway 83, Frontage Road. There was no public opposition during the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for three years. Staff is recommending approval for three years, as is our city manager. This is a temporary structure, and it will serve as a sixth-grade institutional use for the church. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The recommendation is to accept the recommendation from our planning and zoning.
Mayor, I move to approve, second.
Do I have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, an ordinance 4365? Right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit to place a portable structure for the sale of food at Fiesta Grocery, being 208 North Inspiration Road, Lot 1, Madrigal subdivision. The current zoning is C2, and the applicant is Valdemar Cantu. This would require adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve the conditional use permit. On June 8th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. Property is located approximately 130 feet north of West 2nd Street along the east side of Inspiration Road within the Fiesta Grocery site. There was no public opposition during the Planning Commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. I just want to note that this has been in operation since 2013. They have paved the parking area. They put a new roof. They had some damage out there. And they put additional landscaping as well. Staff and our city manager, as well as the Planning Commission, are all recommending approval of this conditional use permit for one year. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit, an ordinance 4366.
Move for approval, Mayor, second.
The motion is second to approve the conditional use permit, and the ordinance 4366. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a portable building for Monte Loco Express, located at 1,002 Horner Drive, being 2.78 acre tract of land out of Lot 214, John H. Sherry subdivision. The current zoning is light industrial. And this...the applicant is Andrew Rivera. If the council is inclined to approve, we would need the adoption of an ordinance. On May 2015 was the first time that this conditional use permit was brought before the council by Mr. Rafael Reyna. Now, we have a new applicant. And we had a public hearing on April 27 of 2016 before the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the conditional use permit for the new applicant. The property is located at the northeast corner of Business 83 and Horner Drive. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval as well, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? This is in front of... Old Lady 3?
Yes, sir.
It's a portable building. Does it have sewer?
Yes, sir.
Is there water? Is there a subdivision right next to it? A residential gated subdivision?
It's...yes, sir. It's got block banks. And on the west side, as you can see on the aerial there, there's a mobile home park.
You've got sewer and everything?
Yes, sir. Water and sewer park.
Is it in the middle of the parking area?
It's to the north side here of the park.
But it's part of the parking?
Yes, sir. And there's plenty of parking for the existing building. And parking is...
What happens in one year? Is it going to go?
They would...they could come back, Mayor, to see if the council would give them additional time. And if not, it would go before the Planning Commission first and then come to the council.
It's already there?
Yes, sir. It's already there, yes, sir. There...it's a renewal. It's a new applicant, a new applicant.
It's already there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So what happens if we deny it?
If it's denied, we would advise the owner, and they would have to stop business. And it's a portable building, so they would...couldn't relocate it somewhere else.
So this building...
I don't like it at all, man.
I'm sorry, sir.
It was sold to a new...is that a new owner?
Yes, I believe so, yes, sir.
Is that street a public street or private street?
The owner road, Mayor, is a public road, yes, sir.
A public street?
Yes, sir, a public street, yes, sir.
So, we're allowing them to use our public street?
They have existing entrances and exits to the existing site, as you can see on this aerial. Can you go back to aerial? That's the entire property, what's in red. And where Jaime is pointing is where the structure is at. And that is the parking lot. So, that's where the structure is right now.
Okay. The recommendation from everybody is to accept this, right?
Correct, Mayor, for one year.
Okay. Well, I don't agree with it, and I'm not going to be in favor of it. So, I just don't like them coming into our parking area and using it as a restaurant.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how our staff and our planning and zoning can agree to that. I think anybody in the audience would look at that and say, "Why are they doing that?" It's a parking area. It doesn't mean that everybody can go into our parking areas and put a stand like that.
And they can come through the process and...
Well, the process is very obvious, very easy to get it here. Because if you all cannot notice that, how bad it looks on Old Lady 3. It's right there.
This is a public hearing, Mayor.
It's a public hearing. I'm trying to speak to you as a concerned citizen.
Yes, sir. I understand, Mayor.
And I don't know if people would agree with us if we have it in all our parking areas, a restaurant like that. It's a restaurant, right?
It's a snack raspa stand. What they sell is just snacks and raspas.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I would like to put in the form of a motion that we deny the request.
Well, I mean, it's...you know, I don't want to be...
And revisit our ordinance, Mayor. And revisit our ordinance, so we won't have to issue anymore.
Does that have a...does that have a...
Well, can you agree with me that it looks bad? You know, how can we do this? You know, and I have to be the bad guy all the time to notice these things. And I just don't think that we should have those things in our parking.
And I agree with you, Mayor. That's why I'm...hopefully, you can entertain my motion to deny and revisit the ordinance, so it won't...
See, if anybody else agrees with you.
Is that a motion, Doctor?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to go ahead and deny the permit for him to be...to have a restaurant in a parking area that belongs to the public. Anybody in favor signify by saying aye. Those against the motion?
Oh, in favor of...
I'm against the motion.
I'm against the motion.
Well...
I'm against the motion to deny it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
One against. So, motion carries to deny it.
There's two to deny, Mayor. I believe there's two. I denied it.
You denied it.
Which means that you have to declare your vote, Mayor. You need to declare your vote in favor.
Well, I'm against it.
So that's 3 to 2 against it.
4 to 1.
3 to 2.
3 to 2.
What are you doing?
I think it's okay for them to be there because we already gave them a permit last year.
Well, you...motion fail, 3 to 2. So, I suggest that you all work it out with the...with some...with the planning and zoning and find out how we can work this thing out so they won't have them in our parking areas.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We'll do that. Item 1.1E...
1.1 what?
1.1E, Mayor, is a public hearing also. This is for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at Mariscos La Chivas, located at 600 North Sherry Road, Suite C and D, Lot 1, Esdras Vega subdivision. Current zoning is C3. The applicant is Samantha Sarai Guzman. And this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it and that the new suite to the west be a wet zone. On June 8th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at the northeast corner of Sherry Road and 6th Street within Lot 1, Esdras Vega subdivision. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year, as is our city manager. Basically, what they're doing, Mayor, here is they're expanding to the... This exhibit on your monitor shows the existing restaurant on my right, your left, and what they're expanding to the left. So, they have...parking is held in common. And they're...what you see in the picture on your monitors that says La Barra 209, that closed down. So, they're going to expand to that area and have more eating area. And it's a restaurant. And so, they're proposing to expand the restaurant and to be able to sell alcohol there and comply with our ordinance 4320 of alcoholic beverage code. So, everything is in order. We are...our Planning Commission recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year. And our city managers are recommending approval for one year.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and accept the conditional use permit and approve ordinance 4367.
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.2?
Disposition of minutes.
Nerma?
Disposition of minutes.
2.1, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't... We have the disposition of minutes that we had on the city council regular meeting of June 13th of 2016. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm going to approve, second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the receipt of some minutes for the planning and zoning commission and the Sherri Gulf Course Drive Report on April 19th and May 25th.
I'm going to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes.
Second, Mayor.
Motion and second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.1, the approval and authorization of an ordinance, Mr. Tejera.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Item 4.1 is an ordinance repealing and replacing the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 42, Health and Sanitation, Article 4, Smoking Regulations, Sections 42-121 through 126. The city of Mission, as a home rule city and as outlined in the charter, is charged with the protection, the health, safety, and welfare and well-being of its citizens. Article 4, Smoking Regulations, Section 42, 121 through 126 regulates smoking within public places within the city limits as one of the current regulations enacted for the above referenced purpose. This ordinance authorizes... This ordinance we're seeing here this afternoon authorizes the repealing and replacing in its entirety of Chapter 42, Health and Sanitation, Article 4, Smoking Regulations, Section 42, being Sections 1 through 20...121 through 126 of the City of Mission, Texas Code of Ordinances to meet the national standards for municipality to be designated as a smoke-free city. Specifically, to improve the safety and health of residents and visitors, this action designates additional public spaces as smoke-free. City staff has met with representatives of the Tobacco Prevention and Control Coalition and has discussed with other cities in our region and in the state on there are no smoking regulations. After reviewing...after a review of the above referenced studies and discussions, the city of Mission finds that smoking tobacco is a form of air pollution and is a positive danger to health and is a material public nuisance. So, based on this information, to permit transition to the policy change, this amended smoking ordinance will become effective in 90 days after its passage. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This matters now before you, Mayor and council.
Before we continue, Mayor and council, I'd like to acknowledge we do have several representatives who are here with us today who the city of Mission and my staff work closely together with to put an ordinance together that fits the needs of the city of Mission. We do have Gilda Bowen with the Tobacco Prevention and Control Coalition. We also do have Tammy Resica, who is with the American Cancer Society. And we also like to welcome Jerry Sabadera with the American Heart Association. So, just want to acknowledge them and for participating and putting this thing together as well.
Mayor, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a resolution 43... Ordnance 4367?
68.
68. We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4368. Is that correct?
68, right? Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. So, we have ordinance 4368 approved. We did have an ordinance already in place, but it's not as strict as this one. So, I just want everybody to understand that we did have one already, but left a few loopholes. But now this really takes care of it.
Mayor, one more thing, if I may. We are going to work very closely with our business sector and with our public to make sure that we let the word out, advise some of the correct ordinance that is in place now. We're going to be working with all three coalitions to make sure that all the restaurants are aware of it. But more than anything, we're going to give them 90 days to go ahead and comply with the new ordinance, working with them very closely and putting up the proper signage and so forth. So, we're going to be working with the media as well to make sure that the message is sent across. If we may, I'd like to see maybe we can come up here and take a few pictures with the council.
They're so bad.
It's candy.
Nobody did. I was supposed to put me in.
We can put them down. You can put it down.
It's not going to cover it.
Thank you.
It's not gonna cover.
Promise.
Your tall man.
Look at your eyes, just peeking out.
Be happy.
Yeah. Smile.
Do I wreck?
Do you want for the monitor?
Humberto Cantú.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want for the monitor?
Thank you.
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 Do you want for the monitor?
Thank you.
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 Oh, this, oh, this is yours?
Yes, it's mine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Now I remember.
Oh, yes. It's been used since I was small.
I forgot I'm being taped, and I can hear everything.
Okay, item 4.2, Ms. Lermah?
Mayor and council, item 4.2, I come before you seeking approval to donate a 2004 Chevy truck to San Fernando Nuevo León. A request has been received by our office, and we have surplus these items, and so we have a group that's ready here to, to receive the 2004 Chevy truck to San Fernando Nuevo León.
We have that truck?
Yes, we do have a truck, and I'd like to introduce mayor and, and council, the individuals that are here today. We've got, she is the president of their Patronato de Bomberos, which is their firefighting department, Licenciada Nelda El Cardosa Mansilla. And we have the Comandante Martín Guadalupe Sánchez Davila, Sánchez Aguilar, Capitán Jesús Enrique Sánchez Aguilar, Licenciada Lilia Eugenia Salinas Escobedo, and Teniente Alde Leos Granado. Mayor, this group is traveling all the way from San Fernando to, to be able to receive this donation on behalf of the City of Mission.
So we need to, Anton donating it right now?
I will move mayor.
Is that Nuevo León or Tamaulipas?
That is Tamaulipas.
San Fernando, Tamaulipas.
Second mayor.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the donation of the 2004 Chevy truck to San Fernando, Tamaulipas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor and council, 4.3 is the approval to donate a 1998 International Dump Truck to the City of Francisco y Madero Coahuila. Same thing, these items have been surplused and these individuals we have here, as you heard earlier, Mayor David Gustavo Inant, who's here to receive this item as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and approve the donation of the 2004 Chevy truck to San Fernando, Tamaulipas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor and council, 4.3 is the approval to donate a 1998 International Dump Truck to the City of Francisco y Madero Coahuila. Same thing, these items have been surplused and these individuals we have here, as you heard earlier, Mayor David Gustavo Inant, who's here to receive this item as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and donate the 1998 International Dump Truck to Francisco y Madero Coahuila. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.4, mayor, is the approval to donate a Ford F-250 Truck to Guadalupe Nuevo León. This item has also been surplused and would be beneficial to this community in Mexico, and they are also here to receive the truck.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve the donation.
Move for approval.
Second mayor.
A motion and a second to approve and donate Ford F-250 Truck to Guadalupe Nuevo León. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So that takes care of the three cities.
Yes, mayor and council, if you would, they would like to just briefly address the, the donations that are being made today. I'd like to invite Licenciada Nelda Cardosa Mansilla.
Si puede darnos unas palabras? Muy buenas tardes. Primeramente, este, darle las gracias a todos, y le traemos un saludo de nuestras autoridades, tanto municipales como de bomberos, y de mi patronato que también están bien activos. Este, no pudieron asistir todos porque no todos tienen visa, ¿verdad? Este, y pues darle las gracias por toda la atención que nos dan, lo que nos han regalado, y que sigamos siendo pues ciudades hermanas, ¿verdad? Y estamos también nosotros allá a su disposición, lo que se les ofrezca de allá de Tamaulipas, ahí estamos, nada más de que nos diga con el señor Yessi. Este, le traemos unos presentitos por ahí, y pues muchas gracias por lo que nos están donando ahorita.
Andre, pues muchas gracias.
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 Presidente del Patronato de Bomberos de Guadalupe Nuevo León, Licenciado José Treviño.
Muy buenas tardes, estimados concejales, señor alcalde. Pues de nuevo estamos aquí con usted, agradeciéndole sus finas atenciones, a su cabildo y a usted por la donación del vehículo 2001 que nos están obsequiando. Muchas gracias.
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 Mayor and council, if you'll recall, this, the City of Guadalupe was one that received a ladder truck that we received as a donation to the City of Mission several years ago, and they continue to be, you know, a good partner with us, good neighbors here. And last but not least, we have Francisco y Madero. We've heard from him as the president of the Sister City Association, but now I'd like to invite him representing his community of Francisco y Madero, señor alcalde David Lavinant.
Agradecerles todo el apoyo que hemos recibido de nuestros hermanos de Mission, mayor. Muchas gracias, los madarences, pues estamos muy contentos, pero sobre todo porque Mission ha sido una parte muy importante al desarrollo que ha tenido nuestro municipio en este último, último año. Agradecerles lo de la barredora, lo del camión de, de bomberos, la unidad para brigadas médicas que ha sido una, una gran ayuda, y hoy este, este camión que irá al Departamento de Obras Públicas será para apoyar a los ejidos o, los ejidos que estén en extrema pobreza que requieren de apoyo de, de material para poder arreglar sus, sus calles y sus, sus viviendas. Asimismo, ofrecerles, tenemos los coach de taekwondo que hace, que en el verano pasado estuvieron por aquí, lamentablemente falleció Humberto Cantú con un paro cardíaco, que lamentablemente no está con nosotros, pero si Nueva Lenzuela y otro equipo de trabajo que tiene podrán contribuir con los jóvenes de aquí de Mission. Asimismo tenemos los coach de fútbol soccer, nosotros tenemos un convenio con el Club Santos Laguna, podemos también proporcionar, mandar a coach de fútbol junto con los de taekwondo, y asimismo profesores de danza para todo el aspecto cultural que podamos, podemos nosotros mandarlos para que apoyemos y en este intercambio que podamos hacer en conjunto con ustedes, pero estar viendo por las nuevas generaciones, por nuestros niños, nuestros jóvenes, estamos nosotros en la mejor disposición de, a la hora que ustedes digan o el día, mandarlos con todo gusto para poder contribuir a este hermanamiento, por este desarrollo en conjunto que debemos de tener. Muchas gracias por todo su apoyo.
Gracias.
We follow our agenda to item 4.5, Mr. Robert Salinas, Public Works.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor, city council members. I come before you seeking authorization to award bid for the wastewater treatment plan expansion. On April 25th, 2016, city council authorized staff to solicit bid for the wastewater treatment plan expansion project. The City of Mission has accepted an open to bid responses for this project. Staff recommends awarding to RP Constructors Inc. at a bid amount of $14,841,556, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Attached we have the letter of recommendation and bid calculation from Meldon and Hunt, which is a project engineer, and of course this expansion will consist of an additional 4.5 million gallon per day treatment capacity for a total capacity of 13.5 million gallon per day. Again, staff recommending awarding to RP Constructors for this project, mayor.
We have a recommendation to go ahead and approve the, the purchase?
To accept the bid, mayor.
To accept the bid?
Yes, sir.
What's the name of the company?
RP Contractors Inc.
RP Contractor for the amount of $14 million?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.7.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, next agenda item, 4.6, is the authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department. Again, staff seeking authorization to purchase via state-approved cooperative contracts for capital outlay equipment for the wastewater treatment plant building. We're gonna be purchasing an air-conditioned 15-ton unit, and of course the specifications and, are attached with the price quote and contract number. Again, staff recommending is the authorization to purchase equipment via approved buyboard contract 415-12.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and solicit bids?
To purchase equipment. It's a 15-ton AC unit, mayor, for the wastewater treatment plant building.
For $27,000.
Okay. Which item are you in?
4.6.
4.6, I'm sorry. Under interest or no? Okay, we have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now we go into our 4.7.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council members, item 4.7 is the authorization to solicit bids for Perkins Avenue Storm Drainage Project. The project will consist, will consist of a storm drainage system improvements at the vicinity area of Perkins Avenue between 11th Street and 15th Street. Drainage project will include 24-inch and 30-inch RCP mains and laterals with curb inlets. The construction estimate is approximately 700,000 orders. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for this project.
So move mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Muggia.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Item 4.8 is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option with Deer Oaks EAP Services. In 2015, the City of Mission entered into a contractual agreement with Deer Oaks EAP for Employee Assistance Program Services. The terms for this contract were for one year with two one-year renewal options with a yearly fixed price increase. Per attached renewal letter, there will be an increase of four cents per employee per month as per original proposal. Staff is seeking authorization to extend contract for first one-year renewal option with Deer Oaks EAP Services. This agreement will extend the contract from October 1st of 2016 through September 30th of 2017. Staff recommendation is the authorization of the one-year renewal with Deer Oaks EAP Services.
I so move mayor.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and execute first one-year renewal option with Deer Oaks EAP Service. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go ahead, 4.9.
Item 4.9 is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. In 2014, the City of Mission entered into a contractual agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for third-party administrator, PPO Network and Pharmacy Benefit Management. The terms for this contract were for one year with two one-year renewal options. Per attached renewal letter, there will be a 1.80% decrease in the administrative fee. Staff is seeking authorization to extend contract for second one-year renewal option with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. This agreement will extend the contract from October 1st of 2016 through September 30th of 2017. Staff is recommending the authorization of the second one-year renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas through Ricardo Filisola, GEF Financial Group.
Is that a decrease or one point?
Yes.
Administrative fees, sir.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and authorize, authorize to execute a second one-year renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.10, the ladies.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Item 410 is, on, on March 28th, 2016, city council authorized staff to solicit request for proposals for auditing services in accordance with the Texas Professional Service Procurement Act, VTCA Government Code, Section 2254.001. Proposals received were referred to an evaluate, evaluation committee appointed to review and evaluate the basis on demonstration, demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the services. Staff received four proposals. On April 15th, 2016, our proposals were evaluated on set criteria outlined in the RFP. After careful evaluation, assessment and interviews, the evaluation committee deemed that Burn McCumber and Cortez LLP is the highest qualified firm to perform the city's auditing services as per Government Code, Section 2254.003, selection of provider. Staff will engage the firm in negotiations for fair and reasonable fixed price rates. The staff recommendation is the approval to authorize staff into negotiations with the highest qualified firm.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second to go ahead and accept a recommendation and, and engage, engage with, with the name of the firm?
Burn McCumber. Burn McCumber.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Yes.
4.11.
Yes, sir. Item 411 is authorized to surplus equipment for the utility billing department. The department is requesting authorization to, attached list is, is one piece of equipment. The item is not working, and no can allow it to be used by the department, and staff is recommending the attached list be declared surplus.
Need a motion to go ahead and surplus.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go here?
Yes, good afternoon. Item 4.12 is approval of final action plan 2016-17 and authorize city manager to execute subrecipient interdepartmental agreements receiving fiscal year 16 CDBG allocations except LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging and Amigos del Valle. City council held a public hearing on May 23rd to solicit input on funding allocations for public service agencies and city departments for the final, final action plan fiscal year 16 and 17 as required by HUD. No comments were received during the 30-day comment period which ended June 9th, 2016. The following agencies and departments were approved for funding through fiscal year 16 allocation of 904,240. Silver Ribbon 4,000, Easter Seal Society 4,000, Children's Advocacy Center 7,000, Salvation Army 2,000, Housing Division 637,000, Administration and Project Delivery 214 to 40. A subrecipient orientation meeting will be scheduled to discuss the responsibilities to ensure compliance with all federal regulations. Staff recommendation is approval of final action plan 2016-17 and authorize city manager to execute subrecipient interdepartmental agreements except LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging and Amigos del Valle. Attached are the action plan and the spreadsheet for, beyond any questions.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the action plan for 2016, 2017.
Would you approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, and authorize city manager to execute subscription. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 413.
413 is approval of final action plan 2016-17 and authorize city manager to execute subrecipient and interdepartmental agreements receiving fiscal year sixteen CDBG allocations to LRGVDC, Area Agency and Aging, and Amigos del Valle. City Council held a public hearing on May 23rd, 2016, to solicit input on funding allocations for public service agencies for the final action plan as required by HUD. No comments were received, as earlier mentioned. The following agencies and departments were approved for funding, and the agency is LRGVDC Area Agency and Aging for seven thousand, and Amigos del Valle for twenty-six thousand.
Mayor and Council, I'm sorry, before you continue, I want to ask Ms. Gadsen yourself to abstain from this vote only because you all serve on the board, yourself and Ms. Gadsen.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the final action plan, and also physical year CDBG allocation to the Development Council, Aging. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
We did abstain.
Yes, I'm sorry, I abstained.
You voted.
I did, I'm sorry.
Take it back.
I take it back.
You're the worst one.
I abstain.
You don't want to go to the meeting, so.
I do.
414.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The City of Mission Police Department has received a request for approval of an ordinance providing for a no parking zone at any time on the north alleyway of the 5 and 600 block on Ramita Street. The Mission Police Department has received several complaints of vehicles blocking the narrow alleyway of said location. Residents are unable to travel through the alleyway due to motors parking on the narrow alleyway while visiting at the large apartment complex just north of the north alleyway on Ramita Street. On June 14, 2016, the Traffic Safety Committee met and approved the request for a no parking zone. It is a recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to adopt this ordinance. The request is being forwarded to you for your review.
Ordinance number?
4369.
Would you approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4369. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, I'm requesting to see if we can go out of order and allow Mr. Belmaras to do 4.17, because I will need that approved before I can do 415. If that's okay with us.
No, that's fine. Mr. Belmaras.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Bring before you item 4.17, authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance. Staff seeking authorization to enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance for future acquisitions of technology, supplies, services pursuant to Interlocal Cooperation Act, Chapter 791 of the Texas Government Code. Staff's recommendation is to approve interlocal agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize to go into an interlocal agreement with National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Dominguez.
Mayor and City Council, the City of Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase a new broadband system for the Mission Police Department Patrol Bureau in-car laptop system through NIPA and the DIR contract, DIR SDD 2061, and the NIPA contract 120471. The Mission Police Department first introduced the laptop system back in 1998. The eighteen-year-old system is in need of a major upgrade. The system is designed to assist patrol officers write their offense reports, incident reports, and accident reports via their laptop computer. Patrol officer have been also dispatched to call for service via the laptop system and officers request driver's license information and vehicle registration information via the laptop system. The new internet-based system will also allow the transmission of images of wanted persons and vehicles. The total cost of this component of the new system is a total of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. The expenditure will be made through our state drug forfeiture account. Again, we're requesting to purchase this system through both of these contracts, the NIPA and the DIR contracts.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
How much would that cost?
Two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. And it's all being paid through the drug account, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the purchase of two hundred and ninety-five thousand. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
The next item, the City of Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase broadband system hardware, software, and professional services from Tyler Technologies, our software vendor for the Mission Police Department in-car laptop system through its sole source vendor. The second component of the new broadband system is the integration of the in-car equipment from PCS Mobile to our existing software system, Tyler Technologies. Therefore, it is imperative to purchase the hardware, software, and the professional services to link both systems together to assure proper operation and maintenance of the broadband system. The total cost of this component of the new broadband system is thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. This expenditure will also be made through our state drug forfeiture account.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.18 is for the acceptance of the monthly tax report for the month of May 2016. The 2016 total adjusted tax levy was nineteen million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, and the amount of collections as of May 31st, 2016, is eighteen million, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, which represents ninety-four point seventy-two percent of the total tax levy. This item is now before you.
Move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the collection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Motion Amendment.
Mayor, real quick, what was the percentage as of last year at this time? It was ninety-four point thirty. Ninety-four point thirty? Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Motion Amendment for the General Fund.
Item 4.19 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. There are two reclassification requests. The first is in the General Fund. This request is to reclassify funds in the Parks Department for park improvements throughout the city. The second request is to reclassify funds in the PD Special Fund for the purpose of purchasing a broadband communication system, which Mr. Dominguez just presented in the previous items, and that's those two budget amendments is all.
How much money is that?
It's a reclassification, so that we're just reclassifying funds from one account to the other.
Well, how much money are we doing on the budget amendment?
The Police Department's side is three hundred and three thousand dollars.
That is from the drug fund, Mayor, to purchase the broadband that we just approved.
Yeah, but we need to give us the number of what you're doing, you know? I mean, you just put budget amendment, general fund. You know, we would like to say.
Give us the whole number.
Budget amendment of three hundred and five thousand that we're doing from this budget to the other budget. I mean, it's just all mess here. The agenda's all a mess.
It's because it.
I wish you all would just talk about the real thing, about the money that we're spending, and the money that we're doing in the budget amendment on, instead of reading everything that you all want us to hear. I just don't care to hear that. Everyone get to the nitty-gritty on what you're doing. But you know, you read all these things and you forget about giving us the three hundred and five thousand. We'd like to know the amount. We didn't get it here, and we didn't get it on most of this other stuff. So, I'm just lost, I guess, but I got it now. Thank you. So, what you all voted on a few minutes ago was a budget amendment of three hundred and five thousand, from certain drug account to another drug account, so.
Three hundred and thirty, Mayor.
Three hundred and thirty.
Yes, sir.
We already voted on it, so, but I wanted you all to know what you all voted for. What else? Thank you.
That was it, but I don't think we voted.
We need to vote for the actual.
For 419.
For the last agenda item, Mayor, the 4.18.
Nineteen, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. I thought we had already voted on.
No, sir, I apologize.
Thank you.
We voted on the purchase of the actual.
Yes, but, see, but we didn't get the number.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I had to ask for it. I think, who does the agendas?
We all do them, sir. I go together with the staff.
Mr. Perez, you do the agendas, or who does the agendas? Does that, I mean, we're going to have a workshop here right quick on this agenda. Who's doing the agendas?
I'm responsible for the agenda.
No, no, but who else work for you?
For the budget?
For the budget, I get together with Randy and with Angie.
Okay, Angie and Randy. When you do this, the agenda items, we would like to, I would like to see more of what we're really going to approve, instead of hearing all these things that you all want to do with it. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
And, for example, the approval of the final action plan of 2016-17 to authorize city manager to execute a subscription, here vamos, agreement receiving FY16 CDBG allocation except the Lord of the Development Council and Area Aging on Amigos, on Aging and Amigos del Valle. How much was the money? With, nowhere to be found. See, if you would tell me, we're doing an action plan to go ahead and change so much money to the Development Council, to, so much to the Development Council and say the amount, and so much to the Aging, to the Agency of Aging and Amigos del Valle. See, we all want numbers, you know? We're not, I mean, we voted on this, and we don't even know what we voted for. So, do you all understand what I'm saying?
Well, like, you look at page 201, it tells you, it doesn't give you what the dollar amount, and I know, it just tells you what you take it from one.
Exactly, it's what Chief Dominguez did here, budget amendment, General Fund, Police Department Special Fund. It didn't give me anything. So, we voted for the budget amendment, but we, you know, we were ignorant here. We did vote for it in Chacavó, but, yes, I like to know how much budget amendment did you make? Because bottom line, we are responsible, believe it or not, for everything that goes on in the city. Do you all understand what I'm trying to say here?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And do you all agree, or do you all want to keep doing the same thing, without knowing anything? Or do you want to know the numbers? You all have to speak up.
Mayor, on the budget amendments, in the middle column of the budget amendment, it indicates the number, you know, I know I have to total them, but it does indicate on each budget amendment where the money's going to, where the plus or minus is going to.
Yeah, but you don't know how much.
And on the CDBG, it does indicate in our, that it is nine hundred and four thousand, two hundred and forty.
It's not on the agenda here.
Well, I think what the mayor, I think, just to clarify, I think what the mayor's saying is on the presentation, he would like to hear the actual number, instead of just on the paper.
But that's what it matters, the presentation. Believe it or not, that tape is the only thing we have.
And so we'll make those corrections, Mayor.
Yeah, please do make those corrections. I don't want to do another budget amendment not knowing what we're doing, because we've done several, and we'll be doing them forever. I don't want to do many more like that, so. We do need a budget, we do need a motion to adjourn, or no, or do we have executive session?
We do.
I move, we move to executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section 551.001, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, I move.
Second.
Motion and second to go to the. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We got 7.18.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion making a finding that the following properties pose a substantial danger of injury and/or an adverse health impact to the people and surrounding buildings, and therefore authorize a city attorney to pursue legal action pursuant to Chapter 54 in order to protect the public health and safety regarding the following real properties. Property number one being lots one and two, Block 10, Southwest Number One. Property two being Lot 19, Block 1, Southwest Number One. Property three being the east part of Lot 12, Block 206, Mission Original Townsite Subdivision. Property four being Lots 6, 7, and 8 of Glasscock Acres. Property five being Lot 12, Block 2, Citriana Heights.
So move, Mayor. This is to authorize the city manager to go ahead and, what is that?
To, Chapter 54 proceedings for, yes, to demonstrate.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Item 7.2A, Mr. Mayor and Council, if the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to approve Resolution Number 1461 authorizing the city manager, city attorney, or outside designated council the use of eminent domain on behalf of the state of Texas to acquire a .008 of an acre situated in Hidalgo County, Texas, and also being a part proportion of a .079 acre tract out of a certain 81.66 acre tract being all of lots 21-1 and 22-1 west addition to Sheraland Subdivision in Mission, Texas, for the public purpose of construction or improvement of Inspiration Road, and to resolve or acquire any necessary right-of-ways related to this project.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Yes, motion carries.
Item 7.2B, Mayor, if the council wishes to take action, we need a motion to approve Resolution Number 1462 authorizing city manager, city attorney, or outside designated council the use of eminent domain on behalf of the state of Texas to acquire a .005 of an acre tract situated in Hidalgo County, Texas, and also being a part proportion of Lot 182, Torres Estates, Number 2 subdivision in Mission, Texas, for the public purpose of construction or improvement of Inspiration Road, and to resolve or acquire any necessary right-of-ways related to this project.
So move, Mayor. A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item C.
Mayor, if the council wishes to take action, we need a motion to approve Resolution Number 1463 authorizing city manager to partially release the weedy lot liens to the extent that they are attached to the land described on Exhibit A of the resolution.
So move, Mayor. A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
And item D, Mayor, I believe pursuant to our discussion that there's no action necessary on this item.
Okay, recommendations for adjourn?
So move.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Yes, motion carries.